We'll go ahead and call meeting order. We have all board members present except for Becken, who's on a family vacation right now. So I'm going to look for, I'll get some additions to the agenda.
That is correct. So we have our contract for our elementary principal. That was, she met with the admin negotiating team yesterday, and so that contract has been added for a recommendation for hire in the consent agenda today.
With that, I'm looking for motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
And motion, Bruce, second from Rick. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no? Carry. If nobody here for public comment, we will move on to the consent agenda. Well, actually, I'll push over to Cheryl for bills first.
I had a chance to go and look through the bills. Everything was pretty much normal. Not a whole lot going on right now, of course, just in between times, but I saw a bill for AP Facility Management Consulting for custodial study. And Janelle had spoken to us about that earlier. And that kind of stood out to me, and Janelle walked me through it, and she's going to give us some highlights here tonight. And also, that last bill, I believe, for school receptions.
Correct.
For the community survey. And that was so beneficial to us. Really gets across to us what the community is thinking and staff, people who don't want to talk to us. Those are the only two things that I really noted. Everything else is pretty much normal.
I think, Jen, as the minutes from last month's meeting, if everybody had an opportunity to go through that, and Janelle, I'll toss over to you for personnel items and...
Sure, absolutely. So we have a Miller mom resignation for the PAC, from his PAC position, and then a recommendation for hire. I do, in my administrative report, I do have a little bit more information about Cassie. But just so that you know, that the admin negotiations team met with her yesterday morning, walked through kind of her background, the process that was utilized for this position. There ended up being 16 different people that were, there were teachers, parents, administration, support staff. There was so, a pretty robust group of individuals that met with six different candidates on the Friday before the weekend of the Fourth. So it really, it was a full, full push. And the committee really did come together and recommended Cassie as higher. So I'm comfortable and excited to bring her forward as a recommendation for higher team today.
With that, I'll look for motion to approve. Senator Jen has presented.
So. So.
A motion from Cheryl.
I'll second.
Second from Maggie. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no? Carry. On communication items, Janelle, back to you.
All right. So I am going to pull up my administrative report, and I'm going to share my screen. There are going to be a number of items that are linked in, that are linked into my report here today. All right. I am presenting to everyone. That's wonderful. Okay. All right. So again, I am excited to introduce you to Cassie Akerson, and Cassie is actually here with us this evening. So Cassie is coming to us from St. Michael Elbertville. She was the supervisor of curriculum and student programming. Prior to her experience at STMA, she was a QCOM coordinator and PLC coordinator. And she taught fourth grade. She has experience in the Wilmer Public School District and Howard Lake Riverly Winston, where she began her teaching career. So I'm excited to have her aboard. So as you, as it became official this evening, please welcome Cassie to the district. So welcome aboard, Cassie. I've moved on to some indoor air quality updates. I thought it was helpful for us to just kind of see a breakdown of the zoning in the building as they're talking about different numbers or different letters of the building. So this is kind of the key point to the building. You'll see my cursor here is, this would be the front of the building where we park. This is kind of the back, you know, where the baseball field is. And so as we look at the descriptors of what's been happening this week, you'll see the A, B, C, and D representation on the diagram. So the louvers in area B were installed. 16 of the 28 are permanently set in place, piping and electrical connections to all units are remaining. You'll see holes are being drilled, electrical switch gears, and there's an update there. Structural, structural steel for wall openings are set in place. You will see that as we look ahead, I'm not going to read all of them. You can read the bullets that are in place there for the updates. But, but it's really, again, I think if we are, if you're really in tune with what is happening in a, these are going to make a lot more sense. To me, what's most, what's most important is I'm seeing progress incrementally throughout in the weeks. Okay? The two-week look ahead, they're completing the structural, structural sheet for masonry openings, completing the holes into the tunnels, starting to set the VUBs in area A. They are pulling wire above the ceiling, electrical conduit, connecting the power to the VUBs and starting the steam piping. This is the other area that I really pay a lot of attention to, where the issues are concerns. So the scheduling, the manpower continues to be an issue. One of them that was specifically noted is that they have one man on the piping, and they really need two or three. He continues to push, they have been pushing them, and they'll continue to. So clearly, that perks my ears up a little bit. And in meeting with him on Monday, really what that means is he is going to push them to pull more people. And when, and maybe you may remember back when we started talking about this contract, some of the requirements because of the federal, the use of federal funds is making sure that everything was, was in the union standards and paid at the correct rate of pay. So they do have to make sure, as they pull in additional people, they're following all of those protocols. He's comfortable and confident that they will, but he does know that they have to follow a process there as well. And then you'll see the installation of structural steel is taking longer than expected. They're making progress, and I'm only mildly concerned, is what his, his statement was. Again, my follow-up to that is, so tell me more about that. What does that mean? And really, it is, again, that his job is to put the pressure on, and he knows that the people that are, some of the subcontractors are going to pull in additional resources to make sure that we are on board. Not once did I get any inkling that there would be any concern for our timeline, and so to me, that's good news. The other area that I want to pull back for you is just an update to our strategic plan tracker. So I'm now going to share this instead of the agenda. I don't want that. Sorry. I'm telling you, I need a driver, a tab.
The worst is when you have to do that in front of all of us.
I know. Well, and then too, I'm trying to not like on the...
That's what happened to all of us.
All right. So on the strategic plan tracker, so again, this is, you'll see all of the months, you know, this, the original one is, is the one that popped up. We most recently looked at 524. So I've updated for you the 712, and you'll see some of the movement here and some of the things that were, we have, that I have identified as items in exploration, items in planning. And then, as I move over, you'll see items that we moved from either implementation into the green or the blue, I'm sorry, which was really already this, the keeping that, that landing place for the stuff that's been, we've been working on, and that is really kind of continuing in the works, so we don't forget it, forget that it was there, but yet it's ongoing. Okay? So as you come back and take a look at that, one of the items that is in exploration right now is, and I've identified it as a, in exploration, because really taking a look at how to bring in some additional support for district staff using both the Character Strong and the Seven Mindsets. Those are both items that we've had exposure to and information from. Seven Mindsets is the information, the SEL curriculum that we have for our students. And there is a staff component to that, so taking a look at how we can use that and continue the growth for not only our students, but for our staff. Taking a look, moving into the items and planning section, you will see I moved the budget evaluation to recommend reductions while aligning with the strategic plan. So as a reminder, when we approved the budget last month, there is a deficit budget of about $416,000. And so we are going to be taking a look at how to make recommendations for reductions, yet remain in alignment with the strategic plan. Okay, so that's going to be part of the, those are the planning pieces. I did move the, we've been keeping the operating referendum kind of exploration. I moved that out because we are now into a campaign based on where we're at in this meeting, this, on this agenda. So operating referendum campaign, it is going to be important to make sure that we have multiple facets of, of communication in many ways, but with a very streamlined information, streamlined process of information. So that's why this has kind of been planning, and I very much expect in the next month that that's going to move to implementation. But we're, we're, can't move it until we approve it. We have board community communications regarding revenue expenditures. Next month, at the end of August, you will see our first report, which is going to have a different, just a different type of explanation around our expenditures year-to-date and comparison to years past, really trying to, again, get information out into the public and to the board about our finances in a way that's a little bit more consumable than just a one-shot spreadsheet when we do a budget update or a revision. But it will have a little bit more annualized information, so we can compare year-over-year. And I think that will be helpful. I also brought forward, here's where I have the buildings and grounds FTE. So I want to walk through, I've moved it from exploration into planning because I wanted to bring you an update on where that's at as well. So let me shift tabs here. So AP Consulting, as Cheryl talked a little bit about, is the individual that I've been consulting with who is, who has experience not only in a larger district as a director of buildings and grounds, but also in smaller districts. And I think that there's a lot of benefit to having somebody that is in that niche come in with an outside perspective and take a look at, at our spaces and our service. So here's really, just a really quick snapshot of an analysis of our custodial service and support. This is still in the works. This is not fast, hard, done. So this is super high level. Okay, so I hesitate to, to share this as a, this is, but this is a progress update for you all. So really, one of the things that he did is he came in and looked at all of our spaces to look at the type of flooring that we have, to look at the types of classrooms, whether they have sinks, whether they have bathrooms, all of the components that are within the classroom to determine kind of the best flow for our custodial work, and along with the best supplies, tools, mechanisms, just really what, what is the best kind of recommendation? He did not come in and make it as a, how many people do you have, where is your, he walked in and gave me this recommendation outside of knowing who we have and what we have. Okay, so that was our first starting point. So as you can see, you know, the, the maps are zoned with colors. And then what he did is he brought in recommendations and suggestions for the flow, the efficiency, and consistency across the district. I think one of the things that is important as we look at any of our, whether it's programming, our, our contracts, our service, or whatever it is that we have and we do, when we can bring consistency across the district, I think the best beneficial. So one of the things that he then made within those recommendations are just some checklists. And, and you will see, these are very detailed, but it really is, you know, in every, so it's, it's just a task card of every bathroom. Here's the process. Here's the, here's the stuff you use. Here's the process to do it. Just really systematizing the work that happens. So it happens if we have a, a number of custodians that are gone at this building, we could have somebody come and support. We can, there's, there's better systemization across the district if we have consistent expectations. Okay? So this is one of the, again, one of the resources. These, again, are in draft. Okay? This has been reviewed, and it is being reviewed by our individuals that are on the staff, and I'm gaining their feedback about the tools, about the, the chemicals, for example. So these aren't fast and hard, but this is just an example of the work that's been ongoing to try to systematize our processes across the district. Okay? Any questions on that? Oh, are they feeling so horrible? I'm there, as I, as I kind of expected, I mean, there's, there's some pushback of why are we, why are you asking us to do this differently? So again, what I've recognized is that, I think when they first came on board, I don't think they had a lot of direction. And, and so I do recognize and honor that they just, they've made it work. So as we come in and look at, how can we do it more efficiently and effectively? Do you have the right tools? Do we have the, as an example, do they have the carts that they need? And if they don't have a cart that they need, of course, they're going to be going back to their cleaning closets 15 different times, for example, to gather what they need. So what can we provide for them for the tools so that it makes a little bit better flow? Our next step is to meet at the end of July and get more specific feedback about, okay, so like the chemicals, for example. If you don't like the chemicals, then let's talk through, is it the smell? Is it the cleanliness? What is it about them? Hilliard is our current provider of our chemicals, and they come out, and when we, and they've done this in multiple schools. They'll come out and provide training. They'll provide you with the, in the, in like, for example, in the cleaning closets, you've got, you can set your distribution system in our cleaning closet that's got everything ready to go. They can push a button, it pre-measures, it pre, it does all of those things for, for us. But if we don't know how to use them, and if we don't, you know, so some of those things are, let's just make sure that everybody knows what, what's available to them. And those are kind of our next steps. I think the bigger, obviously, as we look at this, one of the other things that I've talked about a number of times is making sure that we're being efficient in our recommendation for hire. So if we are, if we are maximizing our efficiency and we're not, we don't have enough people, I'm absolutely going to come back to the board and say, we need, I recommend we have more people, but let's maximize our efficiency and then, and then make that recommendation if necessary. All right. So I'll go back to the strategic plan tracker. And then, actually, the only other thing on there is our social media usage. So let me get our, that tab back up, so that, actually, I'm going to pull up the actual social media usage tab, and then I'll share that out, because that's just the, the data. And this is our annual data. So you'll see. So you'll see our YouTube channel. You'll see the number of views and the watch hours. So again, this was, if you take, take a look at the dates, this is July 1st of 2021 to June 30th of 2022. So this is kind of our summative for the whole year. Okay? Our district views are 74,000. The watch time hours is 13,000, and the subscribers added is 218. Our uploaded videos, you'll see how many videos, oh, sorry about that, I didn't mean to move that. Uploaded videos, you'll see how many hours are there. Our smore newsletter, so this is the Bulldog Bark. One of the things that we learned as we started tracking this information, and this is where I think looking at this as a tracker, the strategic plan tracker has been beneficial. As we do our smore newsletters in our classroom, our building communication, they're going to change the way that they distribute it so that they can track from each building level how many views they have. The way that the bark goes out, he can, Mr. Dickhausen can view that. The way that our current building smores go out, the principals can't see how many views they have. So we're going to change that so we can track it and really understand that level of communication. So that's a benefit that has come out of looking at how we track the data. Okay? You'll see our district website has a total of 198,000 visits. Monthly average is about 16,500. And you will see again on kind of that circular graph, what areas are, are the top. So you've got our departments, just the district home, our user page. So again, what I looked at when I, last month, when we did a summary of kind of the social, the, the good news and the things that was happening, we post a lot of information on our news and announcements page. But as you can see from this graph, only 7.1% of our hits are going to that page. So we wanted to take a look at how can we get that information out in a different way. So this is, this is just a summary of the social media statistics for our webpage. You'll see our district's Facebook page has 50,000 page reaches, 1,083, I think that says. 93 Facebook, oh, might be time for me to get my last updated. Are, that's how many page likes there are. And then you'll see our school district Instagram usership is at about 5,000 with 500-ish Instagram followers. So that information is kind of the, the final, I guess, tab on our tracker that I wanted to show you. I did move over the areas to the incorporated as our literacy bootcamp and our operating referendum updating, because we've kind of done those pieces. They're in the works, but they've moved along with our, our open houses, our shared services. So those, we haven't forgotten about those, but you'll see, they've just moved over to the implemented and ongoing. Okay? And that is, I believe, pull that, pull that back up. That's my update for today.
Any questions? Need that? No additional questions. We'll move on. I'd like to add board update.
It was the fastest meeting ever. We didn't really have anything of significance, just holding on, handbooks and policy.
Typical beginning of fiscal year process.
Few language updates. Yeah, not handbooks and policies, that's.
Probably the biggest thing that's still outgoing with the West Central Ed District is their contract negotiations. They, their teachers have, they voted to have a certified union versus a handbook. So that's been an ongoing process, and we don't know where that's at to this point either, so.
And there's two new soups, right? Two new soups, just Albany and Sockton. Other dynamic, yeah.
Go on to old business policies, second reading.
I did not have any comments or communication around the second reading, so my recommendation, or around the, after the first readings, my recommendation would be to enter, to look for approval.
Promotion approved policy for 17, for 18, for 19, 20, 27, as presented, and remove policy for 40, we covered by policy back 29.
Yeah, motion.
Motion, Rick.
I'll second.
Second from Maggie. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no? Carry. New business, reorganization activities. Bunch of stuff on here.
Yep. I'm just going to, I'm going to quick share the agenda, because there's a number of items that are in the reorganizational. The first item is, is the recommendation for an official newspaper. The Press has been our, the Paintsville Press has been our, our newspaper for a number of years, and the recommendation is to carry that forward for the 22, 23 school year. Authorization for payment and bills. So this is a pretty standard authorization. The really, if you look at the people who are identified, it's going to be the business manager, our associate business manager, our admin assistant, and myself. So that really is, so that if there is a bill that needs to be paid prior to board op, or prior to a board meeting because of a, because of service charges or things like that, we can do it if necessary. But those are the only individuals that would be eligible to do that. You will see census takers. Census takers have been identified as Matt Dickhausen and Miranda Teich. That is the same as last year. You will see hearing officers for hot lunch. I remember last year having a conversation about what does that mean? And there was no need for that last year, and I will see if there's a need for it this year. But that would be the board chair and the superintendent as the hot lunch officers, hearing officers. The banking, you will notice the recommendation based on our RFP, or our proposal that came back last month, that our payroll account, general account, and activities account have all transitioned to magnify financial. And we maintained PMA Financial Network for our, and PMA is the same organization that comes out and does our truth and taxation information for all. You will see commencement date is recommended to be in the same timeline as, has consistently been the Sunday of, the Sunday, that Sunday after Memorial Weekend, so June 4th, 2:00 PM, in the Paintsville High School. And then probably the most, the, the area where I want to just draw some attention to are the fees on the fee schedule. So I'm going to pull that up for everybody, and I'll share that as well. All right. On the fee schedule, the areas that, that I'll draw your attention to that have, have, there was a recommendation for change. The first comes down on the meal costs. We are recommending an increase by 10 cents on each of the meals. So instead of for an elementary meal, instead of 2.65, it went to 2.75. We're also recommending a 10-cent increase from 50 cent, from 40 cents for milk to 50 cents for milk. You'll see the same 10-cent increment for the middle school. At the elementary, there are not extra entree opportunities. There is a, there is a recommendation for a 25-cent increase on the extra entree. Okay? So you'll notice that that is different, that is a different rate than just 10 cents. Otherwise, each of the, the meal recommendations are a standard meal was 10-cent increase, the milk was 10-cent increase. And then the adult, sorry, the entrees, additional entrees were 25 cents across the board. The other area that I am recommending a revision to that we've not looked at for a number of years is a mileage reimbursement. We had different mileage rate reimbursement for different groups. And some of it was based on the fee schedule. Some of them were identified via contract. And, and so for systemization and really consistency purposes, my recommendation is to go with the IRS mileage rate. I think the majority of our mileage is, is administrative mileage, which was the IRS rate. So this is not going to have a significant financial impact for us, but it does provide continuity and just everyone gets the same mileage rate, which is the IRS rate.
You know the reason why it was different at one time? I'm just curious. It's odd.
I, I think it's, and, and I don't know, and it, it would have been 50 cents for like ever. And I want to, okay, not forever, but since people that remembered it, since they were hired, it was 50 cents. So I just don't think it had ever been reviewed or revised. And I think IRS standardization, I mean, that fluctuates. Some years it goes up, some years it goes down, but it's, it's set, and then it, we don't have, we're not bound by anything that's in.
And we've talked about it here and there over the years. And I think as a board, we always felt that it should just be the IRS.
Okay.
And I think regulation, then you don't have to deal with it. It doesn't have to come here anymore.
It is unusual this year. They actually just changed it in the month of July to, I think, 60 cents a mile an hour or something like that. So that's very unusual for changing twice.
Yep, yep. The other area that I'm recommending some revision, and it's been a number of years since these have been addressed as well, is to take a look at our subrates. So when we look at our subrates, the recommendation... Um so when we look at our subrates, the recommendations that I've I've put here for you. Are are based on where the starting wage is for the new contracts that were negotiated last year. So as a, for instance, um our clerical staff is um the starting wage for our clerical staff is sixteen seventy-one. Now, we had a very low rate prior, it was about thirteen dollars an hour. We did not have, and we do not have a number of individuals who are, who do that role for us. If our secretaries are out, because it is so specialized and really the work that they do is is. Um very specific to the buildings, so um there are not a lot of subs that serve in that capacity. Um you'll notice our custodian substitute, um the starting wage for our our custodians are is sixteen fifty. So you're seeing a recommendation of fifteen fifty for a subrate. Our paraprofessionals, you're seeing a recommendation of fourteen dollars or fourteen forty-nine is the starting wage for our paras. Food service, the starting wage is fourteen seventy-two. And our van driver, and actually this is kind of a moot, cuz we don't have that anymore, but is it is thirteen ninety. But so that's why you'll see the recommendations that you see.
I have a question about the athletic and admission fees, so I know there is help available for families if they can't afford to pay for some of these fees.
Correct.
How widely spread is it that do families know that? You, cuz I guess my point is, I don't want any of our students to not be able to participate. Because they don't have the means and that parents would know, they would be supported. And where would they go, I don't know, is that clear and open to?
Um I I will reach out to um our coaches and our, cuz I. My understanding is that there are a number of students who. Finances are not a barrier, so they can participate. Um I I will look into how that happens and where that goes, um but I I know that. Our coaches specifically are are certain that kids are gonna be able to participate. And a fee is not gonna be a barrier, but I will, I can follow up on that.
So I just be curious if there's like a parent says, like that's the very even before a parent's like, you're not gonna be in this cuz it's gonna cost too much. Cuz you do have to, you know, get to, you have to get your wellness checks, like I think in tenth grade. So there are other costs that they're potentially looking at, and then the other thing in addition as well. I don't even know if we have resources available, if there are families that want to attend, but they can't attend. If the two, if there's two adults, that's twelve dollars, if they have a couple of kids, you know, adds up quickly, are we. Leaving behind some families that like to tend, but it's, you know, going to two basketball games a week, that's just completely over their budget.
Right, right, um I will, I'm not certain on that one to know if that has been a um. Something that's been accessible, um I can find out on.
That's a weird booster, help out with that.
Okay.
Yeah, but also how does it get to the parents, so you talked about coaches and stuff. But Maggie's talking about is that parents sitting at home, making a decision. And what your analysis is, probably is not the conversation took place with the youth.
Right.
Okay, now, and we got another things to do, um you're not going there, oh cuz they might not know. And so I think when you're talking communication, you gotta get something to pay parents so they know what's going on. And then making, they can handle it within the family, how they everything wants.
Yeah, okay, our goal should be to get as many students involved and as many extra activities. Because we don't have an issue with graduation rates, but we know that students are, tend to do better and have higher graduation rates with being more involved. So any barriers that we could address to get students involved?
Talk about getting the free lunch applications, you know, getting those in the hands, but on that same note of of the. The information that probably is available, um whether it's when they're signing up for classes in. In the spring for next fall or whatever it is, just the uh the the pan put a fire, just hey, there's help.
Yeah, sounds good.
I agree a lot, I just, my question would be with hockey with four hundred dollars, does River Lakes help with that or is that something that we also help with?
Um. I I'm not certain where the the support comes in for families that, um if they participate in hockey. Um if that bear, if, cuz the, that's a fee, that fee is higher because of the ice time and these negotiations. So I'm not certain if that's of, I will need to find out from our activities director. How that has been in the past, if that's something we've covered, or if if um the River Lakes Association has a. I I'm not certain how that works.
But I have no problem helping kids, but then I see something for four hundred dollars, choose to play hockey, that's huge expense. Wouldn't we be responsible?
Oh, I see, oh, I misunderstood your question, so I, yeah, yeah.
Do they pay that direct, oh no, I I assume they pay that to the school.
I think it also goes back to privacy. So mom and dad get the information at home, I'm not sure they wanna come back and tell it to three coaches or a coach what's going on. When you talk about that, it's all of our stuff, how do we protect confidentiality for everybody, no matter who they are? That they don't feel that other people in the system would ever know about that conversation. Same as with when we talk about the lunch programs, confidential, but the sports are no different, I don't believe. I believe we need to provide for families in a fashion that they can have the discussion at home. Which may be involved or not, but if they talk to the school, it is very, very confidential.
Right, although we would need to make sure we're getting the word out to the families that there's something available, and this is the one person you talk to. They're probably the activity director.
Yeah, right.
You don't have to talk to coach, you don't have to talk.
So do we even have a sheet, a simple sheet that says for help might be available?
I.
That's easier, when I give the family, say, hey, listen, if your family's not of a. Of the means that you want to do this, your child wants to participate, these are the message, follow this person that you get.
Yep.
Also, his speech is not on here, but I thought that was. There. You know, it's part of the Minnesota State High School.
Under non-athletic, I not see that, oh, that's right, I'm like, there we go, yeah, okay, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, cuz this is an boost of of not just athletics, it's it's all. Yep, all activities, correct, yeah.
That looking for a motion approved twenty-two, twenty-three organizational items as presented.
So move.
Yeah, motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Cheryl, send it for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, carry. B, designate individual with authority.
So every year, the uh Minnesota Department of Education requires that a school board designates an individual. Who will have the authority to authorize users for the various uh accounts within the um Department of Ed. Uh sector, so it's everything from submitting uh grant, grant requests to budgets to the full nine yards. Um so M D E says that the board chooses one individual and that typically and traditionally has been superintendent.
So promotion to identify superintendent general board at Bullard as the school official with authority to access the Department of Education's website for paying players' schools. Motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Bruce, send it for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, both say no, carry. It is regulation, uh sorry, magnify credit card authorization, I'd read.
Yep, no, and and this is a pretty simple one too, um this is the time of year where if we have any changes in administration. Um and credit card authorizations, uh you'll see that Rick Henderson is recommended as our new activities director to have. Uh authorization to use the magnified credit card.
We're watching the grant for authorization, Rick Henderson for magnified credit cards. Motion, motion from Rick.
Second.
Second, Maggie, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, carry. Resolution for establishing dates for filing affidavits.
Stand, so this is the first step in um having our candidacy for school board. So you'll see the resident resolution establishing the dates to file affidavits of candidacy. I can pull that up if you would like me to, got that up here. Oh, that's the election, this one, okay.
With that, looking for a motion. To establish these days to August the second through August sixteenth.
So move.
Got a motion from Bruce?
I'll second.
Second from Cheryl, okay, roll call vote.
Bruce.
Aye.
Cheryl, aye, Thomas.
Aye.
Katie, aye, Jake.
Aye.
Aye. It's passed. Another resolution calling a school district generals and stretch election.
Uh so I'm gonna pull this one up and I'm gonna share this cuz this one's a little bit more in depth, um this is our resolution. On for the election. Okay, so what you will see um is that this is the resolution that calls for um our. It it's two different things, it's gonna call for the school district's general election. And relating to the increase of the general election, education revenue of the school district. And calling a special election thereon, so there's two different things on here. So this is saying that we have a school board election and that's just kind of, that's general, that's just part of the election cycle. Um and what makes it special is that we are also asking for referendum at the same time. So you will see that that's why there's um the language that identifies both of those areas. As we scroll, as we kind of go down, you will see a sample ballot around the um. A lot of this is, this is all been prepared by our legal counsel, because these ballots and this process is very, very driven by statute. And so um you will see that this is going to be the um the election ballot. Um when we know who files for election, those names will be there. Um and then because there are four seats, there's going to be four write-ins if necessary. And then you will move down to see the um ballot questions for the operating referendum. So the first question does have the four hundred and sixty dollars per pupil. Um and that is going to have all the language, the required language about um increasing taxes. And then you will also see um the second ballot question, which we talked about, that is contingent. Um that if uh the indexed for inflation, so obviously nothing in the second one can pass. If the first one does not. So those are, those are really spelled out on the resolution uh that you would be entertaining and voting.
So can we make a motion for?
Yep, yeah, look for a motion to the, uh sorry, I was finishing, um with promotion to. Um uh through the following resolution as presented.
I have a question, so we're approving the resolution, but next we're, does that resolution include the language of the four sixty?
Yes.
Yes, okay, should we look at, were we gonna look at the scenarios first, or we could have discussion around there or not? This is like the next thing, okay, never mind.
Oh, they'll, well, okay, that's a good, I did include freer reference and for us just to have in the public, there is the um the breakdown. Um. Like I couldn't remember if we said we were gonna look at that first. And we can, if there is a reference, um so that, cuz this will be used in all of our communication. Um so it it was there as that approval point, um and you'll see the the breakdown of. Um what it is annually and monthly, based on a household property value. Um you you will see that, and and we've had a lot of discussion around this table about. The fact that there is going to be um a thirty-nine dollar that will drop away. So that's where you will see the reduction and then the four sixty add for the net gain. So you'll see that's why there is that um the annual reduction and the annual add.
All right, I just wanna make sure that we know that in the right order if we had it.
With that, still look for a motion to approve resolution as presented. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
Now, a second from Bruce, uh any further discussion? But for roll call vote.
First.
Aye.
Cheryl, aye, Thomas.
Aye.
Katie, aye.
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 Motion's passed, resolution's passed. Uh MF, fiscal year twenty-four, long-term facility maintenance.
Okay, so uh every year, the school district has to um submit a long-term facility maintenance plan. Um this is the 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 plan that has been, um let me pull up the resolutions for you here, um actually the resolution. For the resolution. Um this is approving the district's long-term facility maintenance tenure plan. Um this has been approved as part of the budget, so this is where for this year we have like the um the pipe underneath. Um the football field and all of those, I've I've got a a grid of, uh let me share this out with you too. This is, this is the the same plan that has been approved year over year. Um what happens is it gets revised as we have, now we are using part of our long-term facility maintenance money. To pay back the bonds, so we're gonna start to see that change our revenue available, okay, um I can. I did not, I did not include this um with our, because this has been in in past information. But I thought it might be helpful just to have as a point of reference in our discussion, if there was any question before approving the. Um resolution adopting long-term facility maintenance plan, that's called.
Hey, somebody help me, so what are you looking for?
Looking for the L T F M.
I'm not sure, I can't.
Oh, I bet it'll be there. There it is.
Maybe next step was slide.
I know, I've thought about that.
Sitting way back.
Or I can just sit up there and have a, maybe Miranda wants to change.
If you look at the picture, it'll still encompass the sides, we could probably move ahead six feet here and everybody still be in it.
Um so again, I I'll I'll just give you a minute to take a look at it, but this, nothing has been um. Has been revised since the facilities committee, we've not had a facilities committee meeting for a long time. Primarily because we've not had um some financial, we've not had any movement or opportunity to do anything. Outside of, um it's actually probably been scaled back more so because of our. Because of our um commitment of the L T F M money to our bonds, so that's where there just has been no change to the plan. So.
With that, looking for a motion to approve resolution as presented.
So move, second.
Bruce, second from Jacob, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call.
Bruce.
Aye.
Cheryl, aye, Thomas.
Aye.
Katie, aye, Jake.
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution passed. Food service bin.
All right, uh every two years, the district goes out for a bin for um the dairy and bakery. Um you will see that there's a recommendation to award the milk, the dairy bin to Kems. Um just as a point of reference, if you wanna pull up, uh I'll I'll start with Baker Biz, sorry, I had my papers in the wrong direction, I'll just Baker gets first. Our Baker Bin recommendation is to go to Pan Gold, um share this, oh, the community as well. Uh as a point of reference. Uh, as a point of reference, um, our previous contract and our our previous contract was also with Pan Gold. And as a point of reference, the twenty, the first column there, the sliced kids' choice full grain bread for twenty-two slices. It comes in at a dollar seventy-nine, um, our previous bid was a dollar forty-three, so that kind of gives you a point of reference. And if we go, probably the most substantial one was the sliced three and a half school whole grain hamburger buns. At sixty count, uh, they used to be six fifty and they went up to eight twenty, so there's definitely some increase in that in that bid as well.
Was a count, there was a count difference.
The count that was on the the hoagie bun was a double, but that one, when I looked at this, the the hoagie bun. This one came in at eight twenty, the previous bid was three fifty-two or a twenty-four count. And so they they bid it up a little bit differently, but. Yeah, because that one caught my eye, too, Miranda, yes. And then I will share the. The Kemp's bid. And we also, uh, we were also with Kemp's last, uh, the last bid as well. And it was, so the half pint carton, one percent white milk is point three one four cents this bid. They were at a point two four five cents last go round for the last two years. And then you'll see the five cup, the five, five pound tub of cottage cheese, which is ten dollars and fifty-five point six cents. This year was eight dollars and two, two cents, two point nine, eight point zero two nine cents. I don't know how to read dollars, the hundreds, you know, or the thousands, because that just doesn't work that way. But, um, it, so you can see why that there is some, there is some increase in those bids, but those were the competitive bids. So my recommendation is to adopt, uh, award those, those two. Uh, vendors the bin.
Like for most, that pretty difficult, schools are just getting one bid from companies now or.
These are the only two that were, that we received, yeah.
I think rule wise, uh, you don't have a lot of competition, uh, you know, that can compete at the price anyway, so there's not. I imagine Metro, that's actually even St. Cloud, you might get a little bit more, but.
You know, when they first got on, we got more bids, yeah, but the competition just changed, Joe.
It's hard to beat at the prices that. The one big person can do. So look for a motion to award the bid, the bread bid to Pan Gold and milk bid to the cap. And most Cheryl, second, second from Bruce, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, carry. Upcoming meetings. Full summer.
Full summer, she was okay.
For last summer, it's okay.
Last summer was.
Nothing, I don't see anything wrong with those two, so with that, uh, we need a motion to close the meeting, the purpose of conducting a superintendent evaluation. At five fifty-three P M.
I'll make that motion.
Motion Cheryl, second, from Jake, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, carry. I am looking for a motion to open the meeting.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion from Rick, the second from Cheryl, the open meeting at seven thirty-nine P M, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, carry. Uh, statement for the closed session, um, at five thirty-three P M, we close the board meeting, uh, for the evaluation of superintendent. Completing the evaluation, the board has reviewed all areas of responsibility and performance. And have complete confidence in the superintendent's direction and leadership. So. Well, thank you, and with that, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move the board, do not adjourn.
The motion from Jake. Second from Maggie, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, carry.